Good evening, I'd like to call to order the February 11th, 2020 Town Council Committee of the Whole regular meeting. Councilors present are Baumgartner, Parker, Aubrey, Bordelon, Zupari, and Granatowski. Counselor Franco and Counselor Melendez notified that they are out of town, and Counselor Heath is on his way back from a business meeting out of town, and he should be here shortly. So we have a quorum. Calendar and Communications. Counselor Baumgartner.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Parker.
Just that we received information about the athletic fields from constituents.
Thank you. Counselor Aubrey.
I attended the Always Home fundraiser on Saturday night. It's a wonderful group that we have here in Groton that does a great deal for people that become close to homeless. And people were extremely generous. 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 So it was quite a nice evening.
Very nice. Counselor Bordelon, thank you for attending.
I just wanted also to state that I also did receive an email that all the councilors received regarding our sports field. Would it be appropriate to read it into the record?
If you'd like to.
Okay, just for full transparency, I think it's important to read into the record, and I didn't have time coming straight from work, so I do apologize I didn't print it. So I'll read it from this device and bear with my eyesight. So this came from a constituent, Larry Grundy. Says, "Good morning, Mayor Granatowski, Counselor Bordelon, Counselor Baumgartner, Counselor Franco, Counselor Heath, Counselor Melendez, Counselor Aubrey, Counselor Parker, and Counselor Zupari. My name is Larry Grundy. I reside at 64 Kings Highway, Groton, Connecticut. I'm a lifelong resident of Groton where I run three-generation landscaping business along with my dad and my oldest son. I have three kids who all attended Groton Public Schools. My oldest son graduated from Fitch in 2014. My daughter graduated from Fitch in 2017 and will be graduating from Groton Public Schools Transition Academy this June. And my youngest son is a freshman at Fitch. I'm the vice president of the Music Booster at Fitch, and I have been a parent volunteer with the music department at the high school for 10 years. For the past eight years, I have been the chairman of the marching band competition, Sounds by the Sea, that the Fitch Marching Band hosts each year. I also attend Groton Bible Chapel where I am involved in numerous ministries. I say all of this to say that I'm invested in our community and want to see it at its very best. In my humble opinion, I feel that we are not at our very best when it comes to our playing fields at the high school and in the town. I would like to highlight the football field and the fieldhouses at Fitch High School. The access to the field is inadequate, and there is only one way in and one way out. None of the facilities, stands, bathrooms, fieldhouse are handicap accessible. The concession stands is outdated and very inadequate. There is a grass field which really limits the amount of different teams that can utilize that space for practice and games, which would be under lights, opening up more space and time for teams to practice and to play. Installing an artificial turf field like the one that will be installed at the new middle school will allow for opportunities for practice and playing time because it would not be getting torn up by a regular grass field, the way a regular grass field would be. As a parent volunteer with the Fitch Marching Band, over the past 10 years, I have had the opportunity to travel with the band to numerous marching band competitions around the state at a number of the different high schools. I also am at most of the home games for football games in support of not only our football team but also our marching band, but our hometown football team. At the band competition we host at Fitch, it is extremely embarrassing. The ladies do not have proper access to the bathrooms due to the regulations that the ledge light places on where and when we can place our grills. Women have to go up behind a small fieldhouse and then back down the hill to access the bathroom or use a portable house. As such, both the men's and women's bathrooms look like something from a back road service station out of the middle of nowhere. All of the facilities at our high schools are far superior to ours. They all have easy access and are handicap accessible. Have beautiful artificial turf fields, excellent bathroom facilities, and concessions that are top-notch. We are really behind at least 10 years. I was pleased to hear that the new middle school field will be artificial turf, which will open it up to numerous athletic teams. However, it will be lacking light, stands, and concession area. The addition to these items will open up so much more options to the town for not only the middle school and the high school teams, but also to other organizations such as Groton Mystic Lacrosse, Groton Mystic La Football, the Groton Soccer Club, Groton Parks and Rec, etc. And then it goes on. I guess it's really long. Sorry. I'll stop there. That highlights a lot of it, and it's hard for me to read from this phone, I do apologize. And then I think at this end, he basically states that, "I understand making all this happen takes money. However, I believe that this would be a great use of resources because directly impacts the community in multiple levels. I strongly encourage you to please make this happen and work with the Groton Board of Ed and RTM to better our communities in a meaningful way. I'm willing to help in any way that I can and know that there are many people in the town that want to see this happen. As local employers look to hire, let's do all we can to make our town of Groton the best that it can be by making it as attractive as it can be to new people looking to move here. With great respect and gratitude for your service, Larry Grundy."
Counselor Bordelon, if you would, please just forward that to the clerk, and then she can include it in the record so that all of the whole complete letter would be there. Counselors Zupari.
No report.
I haven't recorded anything, so I don't appreciate that.
Yes. Wait, Counselor Bordelon, would you forward it to Mr. Bird as well?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you. Sometimes when the material comes through the clerk's office, it automatically becomes part of the record, but if it comes to us directly, then we have to process it in that way. I just wanted to let the public know that the Board of Ed, Town Council, and RTM met the night after our last meeting, and we had a very good discussion about the upcoming budget, and everyone kind of was talking about where they stood on various issues. So it was a productive meeting. Let's see. Approval of minutes, 2020, 75, January 28, 2020 minutes. This is on page two. Counselor Baumgartner.
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of January 28, 2020. So moved.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelon. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Counselor Baumgartner.
On page seven, if you see in the box, "Moved by Baumgartner." My name is spelt incorrectly. Have it changed?
So on page seven of our packet, the box recording the votes has a misspelled last name for Counselor Baumgartner.
Correct.
Was there anything else?
Yep. And in the future, I know there was much discussion around, for example, the issue relating to the schools and the Fuss O'Neil study. You know, in the meeting minutes, it states discussion began with or centered around, and it doesn't actually highlight who was asking what question, and I think it is important to include that for the record so the public is aware of what individual council members are asking, you know, the folks who are presenting to the council, and expect answers for the public. So I don't know if that would mean we wouldn't approve these meeting minutes, but there were certainly a lot of questions, I think, that ought to be included, I think, in the meeting minutes. That way we can kind of ask for or expect accountability in the future.
Anyone else have... Counselor Bordelon.
I can agree with Counselor Baumgartner. I do also think if there are comments made, they should also be included. That way it's for the record, and just the way that we would add Mr. Grundy's attachment, you know, if someone comes and publicly speaks, considering we only offer currently under the current rules stating that someone can only speak once a month, we only have public comment, that does limit a lot of people to accurately have the time to speak. So I do think that it's important that we capture that to refer back to.
Okay, so right now we're approving the minutes. Counselor Baumgartner, what I would suggest is, as you are on the Rules Committee, I would raise that with your Rules Committee to see if the Rules Committee would like it to be more narrative than it currently is. But for this time, unless you have something specific that you want them to include, we need to just... Mr. Bird.
I just want to mention, it's not going to be a transcript, though. We don't have the staff capability. But we could certainly, I'm sure she could do more than what's being done, but be careful how you write any rules because it's not going to be a transcript.
Okay. So is there anything, any other issues with the minutes?
You've got to come before our meetings.
Okay. So noted, Counselor Baumgartner's sentiment is so noted. All those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to oppose as well.
So four in favor, two opposed, zero abstentions. So this is unusual. So the acceptance of the minutes fails. So we will refer that to the clerk and see how that will be handled. I'm assuming this is going to have to come back at another meeting to be reviewed yet again. So we will deal with that when we get to it. We are on two, 5A.
May I speak to my refusal of the minutes?
The vote is taken. 5A, 2020, 76. Athletic field updates on page 13. We don't need a motion. We are having a presentation from Mr. Locken, it looks like, and gentleman from Kenton Frost. Would you just introduce and tell the public who you are?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm Jerry Locken. I'm the manager of REC Services for Groton Parks and Recreation, and with me is Chad Frost from Kenton Frost, landscape architect.
Perfect.
There you go. All right. They're in downtown Mystic. They've done a lot of work with our fields and various park projects over the course of the years, and they are as knowledgeable as anybody in the community about what the state of our facilities are as anyone. So with that, Chad.
Good evening. Again, my name for the record is Chad Frost with Kenton Frost Landscape Architecture. We have been involved with Park and Rec for quite a few years, assessing the fields and doing various projects for them throughout the town. So this is an update to a study that we have done over time. So I'm going to give you a brief, different computer, see which way we go, brief history of the fields work that's been done through Park and Rec to this point. Going back 17 years ago was when Park and Rec first noted that they were having issues, that they had recently completed Paquonic Plains. Paquonic Plains was constructed around 1999, and by that point, 2003, they were already getting more demands for field use than they could handle. It took a couple of years between 2003 and 2009 for the department to come up with funding, and in 2009, they did a very comprehensive Park and Rec master plan that looked at all assets all over town, extremely comprehensive. As far as fields go, they were also assessed, and they were assessed individually, and the components of each field were assessed at that point. But then as far as demand goes, there was a level of service evaluation. And what that means is that it was basically looked at compared to the nation as a whole. So you look at a population and per capita, you normally have X tennis courts or X football fields and things like that. And that's good. However, we know that Groton's a little different than, you know, Texas as far as field usage. Also in 2009 was a Sutton Park master plan. Based on the feedback that came out of the comprehensive master plan and the need for some improvements, Sutton Park was undertaken to do skate park improvements, public park amenity improvements, and reshape the existing baseball fields into three new fields. In 2014 is when we then did basically the basis of what is this current assessment. Again, nothing had been completed. By 2014, there was a lot of demand for new use of fields, and instead of just doing level of service, we did a much more in-depth research methodology to look into the actual field usage. And so we went through and we literally charted every single kid, adult, that used every single athletic facility in town, how many hours, how many games, all that sort of stuff, to really get into the data and compile it. In 2014, what we discovered is that there was a need for four additional, and I'm going to call them soccer fields because that's the biggest, but it's a regulation-sized rectangle. We needed four full-size fields. We needed one youth field, and we need a future need to meet future need of five ball fields. Then also in 2014, to start to figure out how to meet that demand, we did the Merit Property Master Plan. And in that plan, there was one championship soccer field that could have been synthetic turf, three additional, what we call soccer fields, a regulation rectangle, one youth field, and then the addition of Sutton Park would meet the current demand at that point in 2014. Also, because we got a lot of questions from the council, at that point, 2014, we did an economic impact analysis for athletic fields to figure out if enough fields were built to meet the demand, and they could host tournaments, what kind of economic input that would mean for the town. And at that point, the study estimated to be between $2 to $5 million annually in new economic input to the town if these facilities were built. So I'm going to run you really quickly through our criteria of how we do the needs assessment. It's a lot of boring facts, but I just wanted you to have a good understanding of where we get there. So it comprises of three things. A facility assessment, which is the type of field it is, the quality it is, the condition it is, and then the field gets a score based on that facility. The capacity analysis is the fields that we have, the days of the week and the times of the week that they're available, and the hours, and what we end up getting is how many hours a week a particular field type is available. So that's the capacity. That's how we know how much we can handle. And then the demand is obviously how much demand we have by people trying to participate in sports, the participants, the frequency, the hours that they need. And then when we pile all that together, we can put up a total needs assessment. And just really quick, facility assessment, just because it's green grass does not mean it's a suitable athletic field. And a lot of the fields that, you know, our residents are playing on in town right now are barely green grass. Athletic fields, when they're built properly, are built to be about 18 to 24 inches deep with all sorts of soil profiles to make sure that the impact is available as participants are contacting the soil. Because, believe it or not, the majority of injuries in sports don't come from player-to-player contact, it's player-to-ground contact. And so the thing that we worry the most about is the condition of the soil and how forgiving it is. So anyways, on the facility assessment, it's the number of fields times the conditional score, and that gives us what we call the functional field equivalent. So this was a list of all the fields going through, the conditional assessment, the use assessment, the scores. Just to give you an example, say Paquonic Plains, there's two rectangles there. They both are in very good shape for being 20 years old. They have been maintained impeccably well. And so we have two fields that get a score of one and a use assessment of one because they're open to the public 24/7. So the total score for fields is two. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
However, at Fitch Middle, down lower, we have two rectangles. However, the conditional assessment's a .6, the use assessment is a .75 because they're not available to the public all the time. And so therefore, the functional field equivalent of those two fields is actually slightly less than one field. The capacity of those two fields is less than one field, is how this assessment works. The capacity analysis then looks at the types of fields, the hours of operation, and optimum field use guidelines. And so this is a little chart about how much time you can put somebody on a field, right? So Park and Rec has done an amazing job of managing Paquonic Plains Park, much to the frustration of a lot of us who use the park. If it's super wet out and soggy, they won't let people go out and play because it'll destroy the field, right? And natural grass fields need a certain amount of time to recover between uses. And so all of that goes into how much time you can put on the field. So the capacity analysis, this is all the data that supports it, again, the number of fields, the number of days, the number of hours, and we get the hours available per field type. I'll just skip through that. This is the full-on demand analysis, again, charting everything, total hours needed per week, per field type. In 2014, this is kind of where the data starts to come together. The top line is the demand. That's how much demand we have per hours per week per field type. The second line is the supply. That's how much we can actually produce based on what we have. And then we have the deficit, and we have the fields needed in order to meet the current demand. And since that looks like a whole bunch of gibberish, in 2014, this is what you're probably interested in. We needed four fields, four regulation rectangles. We needed one U-10 regulation rectangle, and we had what we're calling a future demand of the five baseball fields. And we're saying it's five baseball fields because baseball relies very heavily on private fields that aren't owned by the town. They're played on churches at the YMCA in Stonington because they share cross-border. So those ball fields, they had enough at that point in 2014, but the fields aren't controlled by the town. So we're saying the town should look to invest in them in the future. In 2014, as hopefully some of you have seen, this was the recommendation for the Merit Property. The fields, as we know, that is not going to happen. This was the recommendation for Sutton Park, again, improvements to the skate park, improvements to a lot of the amenity areas, improvements to the parking, and most notably, we can reorganize the baseball fields, which currently is just two fields, into three fields, consolidate all the parking into a general area, and then also have a centralized, you know, concession stands, bathroom facility located in the middle. So 2020, we've been asked multiple times through the couple of years as the school 2020 plan has been coming into effect, what will the impact be to athletics? As best we can tell, based on the plans that are currently publicly available, this is the impact based on our current assets. So at Fitch, we actually lose one regulation rectangle. There was a field, although it was hardly used because it was in really bad shape, but adjacent to the parking area on Merit that was signed and used for soccer occasionally. So we're technically losing that field. At Cutler, we lose one regulation rectangle, we lose a softball field, and we lose a baseball field. However, we think when the elementary school is done, we'll add one youth rectangle back. At Westside, we're losing a skinned ball field, a softball field. However, we think there might be three additional small fields coming back. And then at the new middle school, as everybody's been mentioning, we have a new softball field coming, one synthetic turf field, which is an excellent addition to the town, and one smaller rectangle. So we ran everything through the numbers again, and I should say that Jerry reached back out to every single youth organization, adult organization in town, and did a new compilation of use data for 2020. The takeaway for you is that there was actually a small decline in the number of youth participants. And that's not uncommon. We're seeing that across the board, just as school enrollment is going down, the population is going down. We've had some discussions with even the senior management at Dick's Sporting Goods, and they think this little drop in sports is actually due to the recession. This is the recession dip, that the kids from when recession was happening now, there's a fewer amount of kids, fewer amount of kids playing sports. So we do see that across the nation, that there's a small decline in youth participants. However, that hasn't reduced the number of teams that are playing. So, and in my case, I'm also the president of Groton Mystic Lacrosse. We had seven fewer players last year than we did the year before. We still fielded the same number of teams. So we still needed the same number of practice hours on the fields in town. So the actual demand hasn't gone down, even though the participation's gone down slightly. The increased demand for fields has gone up, and the adult field requests have gone up significantly. There's been new adult programs that have formed between our last study and now, and they're running quite a few more events on the same facilities without anything new. So the 2020 supply and demand, this is the same chart updated with the new supply, the new demand, and the new deficits. To make it easy, here's the bar chart of what we need. So taking into account a full build-out of the 2020 school plan and the current demand, we need at least one baseball field. We now need three regulation rectangles. It was four before, we're down to a need of three. We'll have a surplus of the smaller rectangles of the U-8, U-10 sizes, and then we're still projecting a future need of the ball fields as private ones go offline. So there's the two compared side by side. Again, there is an impact. It has changed, but it is by no means meeting the need. So to kind of summarize things from my perspective, the athletic facilities are in desperate need in town. As, I do appreciate the letter that was written in the record, the facilities at Fitch should be just downright embarrassing to all of us as citizens. It's really in a bad state. You know, Park and Rec has done a phenomenal job with Paquonic Plains. Any other asset in town that's 20 to 25 years old that still looks like it's almost new, they've done a phenomenal job managing that, but it's extremely difficult to manage, especially with no new assets coming on. So I do think the town needs to have a town-wide approach to meet the needs. It shouldn't be just Park and Rec, and it shouldn't be just Board of Ed. I think there needs to be a consolidated effort to figure out what's the best solution for the town going forward. My recommendation would be that you do that with the idea to facilitate tournament play, that you build it in a way that tournaments could be hosted here in Groton because there's significant revenue to be made there. Something that we promoted back in the Park and Rec Master Plan was destination recreation. We all know that travel sports are growing annually, and the organizers that are running those events are always looking for new venues to host at. And what they really like to do is they like to go to a place that has a name recognition, right? Mystic has a phenomenal name recognition. And if a tournament event organizer is deciding whether they should go to somewhere upstate New York in the middle of maybe nowhere with a whole bunch of fields, or maybe to Mystic, there's a better chance they might do it in Mystic because it becomes a destination, and people at least have a name familiarity, and they might want to come here on vacation. And instead of just coming for one or two days as a one parent and one child for an event, they might come for a longer stay and make a mini-vacation out of it. So that's what we call destination recreation. Per the Camoin Economic Study that was done a number of years ago, again, if you build just this small amount of fields and build it in a way that can facilitate those events, it has the full potential to generate $2 to $5 million of economic input. And that's not money to Park and Rec or the town. That's economic input through hotels, restaurants, and things like that by people coming into town. And that's running a modest couple, like three to five tournaments a year. So this isn't making it a massive thing. And we have that whole study I can give you. I just didn't want to go through all of it again tonight. It's also a great way to market the town, knowing what EB is doing with their expansion. When people come here to play here and they see the excellent facilities, they're going to be more likely to want to come to the town. It puts a good brand on the entire town. We also call sporting a gateway experience. Because a lot of times, sports might be the first time somebody comes to the town, it might be the first reason they have to come to town, and bring people to town, and give them a new impression, and decide if they want to live here longer. We all know, there's been many studies done, that athletic fields and recreational opportunities increase property values dramatically, especially close but even in a far distance. The more recreational opportunities you have close to residential areas, the higher the property values we see, and therefore revenues to the town. And most importantly, it's quality of life. I think Groton, for a long time, had been a leader in outdoor recreation. We were one of the first towns to build the beautiful Paquonic Plains before other towns around us had assets like that. We have all the Bluff Point, Haley Farm, all the walking trails, the Merit Property. Athletics and outdoor recreation is a huge component of quality life. In fact, it's the reason I moved to this town, because I wanted to be close to those assets. And I think we need to continue developing those assets, instead of letting them kind of sit by while we've built, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of other new projects and not done any improvements to athletics. So that's my quick, long summary of the needs assessments for athletics.
Thank you. Give me one second, please. I'm just keeping track of council members. So Counselor Heath has arrived. Mr. Locken.
So we just heard Chad go through a litany of studies and analyses and problems and issues that we've had over the years. And through that whole time, my entire career at Parks and Rec, over 20 years, we have yet to develop one field to address the need. So we've had these studies, we've had the answer, and the town hasn't yet, to this point, put any money into those facilities. So, you know, the town is crying for action on this, and it's something that I'm hoping that we can make some movement on this, and we can do the job at Parks and Rec of allocating those new field spaces out to people that are, you know, clamoring with demand. So that's, from a staff standpoint, that's where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Locken. So just for clarification purposes, the photograph in the top picture would have been the Merit Property, correct?
That was the master plan we created for the...
So the numbers quoted there would have been if the Merit Property had been developed as fields rather than as a school facility? as fields rather than as a school facility?
It was developed based on four athletic fields in a complex that could be used for tournament play, correct?
All right, so that's no longer relevant?
In that, in that location, obviously not, yeah. I mean, I think it was literally the week that we made our presentation of the master plan to the council, it was released in the paper that the school was going to go there, so.
Very good.
It's been sitting still since. I would say it's still, the numbers, again, those are old economic numbers, but they still would be applicable if there was an opportunity somewhere in town to build a complex that could be used for...
So, Mr. Burton?
I just had a question. Jerry, just when I sent you some information on the steep grants earlier, have we ever pursued those in the past?
Not, I don't think specifically we have. I didn't get a chance to go through all of those, but I did see that those grants have been available, and I'm not sure exactly all the criteria that goes into those, but...
Some towns have had, you know, it'd be like one field at a time type thing of approach for grants. I did talk to Representative Conley earlier. Right now, with the tolls, it's kind of, the steep funds this year are tied up, they're holding them up for that, but she's going to give me more information on applying. That's a long approach, though, you know, but it would certainly help whatever we do if we could pursue them.
So I have a question for you, Mr. Burton. If we look at the bottom of page 13, your recommended action says, "Staff is looking for direction from the council on how they would like to proceed." I'm not quite sure I'm understanding why we're having this now, because we're just about to come into budget session, and there are CIPs that we're going to be looking at. So are you looking to find out whether we want this type of thing included in the CIP list?
Well, it's too late for this year for CIPs. Those are set, they've gone through the planning commission. I mean, we're talking a lot of work here to figure out exactly where and which fields, and what has to be done and improvements. I don't know, Jerry, if, you know, you discussed, you know, Chad, you discussed doing a broader approach, so I don't know if you think, if you have a group in mind, maybe you want to pull together to review that?
I'm confused, I'm sorry. So you're looking to find out if we want to do another master plan?
I think a group just to try to, I don't know if...
So I think if we could have direction from the council that says, "Go out and bring back a plan to address the athletic field needs in Parks and Recreation and at the high school." I know there's another whole group of boosters up at the high school that are like Mr. Grundy, who is concerned about athletic fields at the high school. There's that group, and there's also the group of people that continually use Parks and Rec fields. But to this point, we have, we know what the numbers are, and I guess we just, we need from the council to know, okay, go out and, you know, Plan A, a complex, or, you know, give us a list of potential properties, or where does the council want us to go? There are obviously dollars that are going to be associated with this, you know, what is this something that the council would like to handle one field every other year for 10 years, or is this something we'd like to build a complex all at once? There's all kinds of possibilities. I do know in the CIP that we're going to be coming to the council with this year, there are some smaller projects, you know, some renovations to fields at the Groton Community Center, for example, are listed there. Those will help, but those are not the, those are not the final answer, and it's just a matter of scope. You know, that's a small thing. Where does the council want us to go in terms of the bigger overall picture is really what we're hoping to get some direction on that.
So one of our most vocal people supporting fields is not here this evening, so I hesitate to take any action, but having said that, we'll let Councilor Parker speak, she had a comment.
I hear what you're asking for, but like Mayor has said, we are getting ready to go into budget season, so it's not like we can plan, do a plan to do a field for next year if it's not within our budget yet. And we're getting ready to go into our budget session without having enough information. So this is the second go-around with this plan, and you've already looked at the fields that we need the most, if I'm hearing you correctly, but you want us to go forward with telling you, "Go ahead and get us prices"? Is that what you're looking for?
More of, on the lines of how you would like us to proceed in terms of process. I think the answer is, like, we have a group of folks, and some here even tonight, who are here listening, concerned about athletic fields. We have the ability right now, we have, the Booster Club at the high school is meeting right now to kind of try to propose something. We have youth sport organizations that we continually talk to through Parks and Rec. If, you know, the council would like us to create a task force of those motivated, interested, involved people, we can do that. And if we know that when we come back to the council with a, this is what the best recommendations are from this various group of people, that that's something that the council will entertain that at the time, and maybe it's not next year's budget, but it's in the '22 budget as a capital project. Those are, that's the kind of direction we would need in order to kind of get these interested, motivated, impacted people, you know, moving forward in a direction that can actually end up with fields being developed.
All right, so basically what you're asking for is to put a task force together to figure out what we can move forward with?
I think that could be one possibility, yes.
All right, we have Councilor Zepary, Bordelone Bumgardner, Heed. I would also like you to keep in mind, we're missing Councilor Franco and Melendez tonight, so I would hate to make a decision without the two of them here. Councilor Zepary.
I have several questions and some comments as well. Do you have sites selected for the fields? Do we have land that the town already owns, or will we have to acquire land for these fields?
That study hasn't been done yet. I mean, that study, I would say that study hasn't been done yet. Right now, the last study that was done, the school took the property afterwards, and so I feel on some level, what I'm, and I don't want to speak for Park and Rec, but I think what I hear is, they've had previous councils fund these studies in the past, do them, present the plan, and then have it not go anywhere. And so instead of continuing to do plans, it's, does the council want, you know, will there be some support coming? Is it worth doing the plan? And I think a task force might be the right opportunity, and I think joining the Board of Ed and Park and Rec somehow together to make sure there's no duplication is the best way.
I had previously asked for the schedule, scheduling for these fields over the last two years, to know how often they're vacant, how often they have been scheduled. I presume the schedule that you're offering figures in that certain amount of the time they'll have to be not used so they can recover, but that should be built into the schedule on which you offer them. So I would like to see the actual schedules for these fields and see how overloaded they are. The other thing is, I'd like to see, Chad, if I could, I'd like to see your studies.
Yep.
And the comment I would like to make is, we do have a limited amount of money. We don't have money, we can't do everything that is, we're called on to do. Developing athletics and athletic fields in the town, I think, is a superb idea, but right now, we're faced with three bridges in town that are out, closing, well, two of them are closing roads. One is putting a portion of the town in jeopardy for, because it's the only access to a fairly substantial residential area. So we have things with priorities. The other priority that we seem to be ignoring since God knows when, is that there's a very large segment of this town that does not have city water or city sewage. I understand city water is Groton Utilities, I have to work with them, but we haven't done anything about working with them. And the other thing we have to consider as we organize our priorities, is that we've just built three new schools, and we expect the impact of that to result in, am I correct, Patrice, a 2 mil increase in the tax rate?
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
2 mil increase in the tax?
Not in one year.
Not in one year, over four or five years.
Okay. So we're, we're going back to the idea that we have to look at our money supply. We don't have an unlimited source. We do have a responsibility to try to, you know, keep it reasonable for the taxpayers, and then we have to organize our priorities to get the most important things done. Now, let's see, shall we have another field for the kids to play ball on, or shall we have a bridge that's out? Should we repair that? And so as we're making these choices, and I think we should consider them as choices, and not surge forward and say we can do all things for all people all at once, because I think that's the recipe for chaos. But as far as building new fields, I'd like to know what it costs to build one field, what it costs, and how many fields do you exactly do you need? Because I was a little confused. At one point, I saw three fields, and then I saw more than three fields in your report. So I'm not sure how many fields we need, but we need to be able to say, what's the cost for what we want to do? Now, there's the cost of purchasing the land, and then there's the cost of actually constructing the field. And you were mentioning the criteria, you have to go 12 to 18 inches deep to develop a field that will reduce the probability of injuries to the participants on that field. Those are important considerations, but along with those considerations comes the cost of doing those things. And we're the people, the only thing we do up here, or very, we do very little more, we do do more, but very little more, is we decide how much money we're going to spend. And we try to prioritize things. And so I urge my colleagues on the council, as well as the people, you, not to be discouraged, that we should do these things, but I urge my colleagues on the council to consider the priorities that we have. And ultimately, I think we should get the fields done, but I don't, frankly, from my point of view, I don't see that as a this-year thing.
We have Councilor Bordelone Bumgardner, and then Heed.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I would love some extra notes on the backdrop so I can follow it more closely. The cost to the town is the cost to our families, to our children, and our obligation to provide safe, adequate, and abundant fields in this town. I understand, as councilors, in respectfully state, that what Councilor Zepary stated is regarding the bridges, I'm new to the council, only in the last year. I can't speak on what this town has done over the years, I only can go on what's been done now. And the fact that bridges and other things haven't been done, that's also a concern, but this also is a concern. Taxpayers choose to live here based on these attributions to the town. As a graduate from Fitch High School, that field, I don't think, has been touched, the facilities are embarrassing. I went to, out of town to my son's baseball game one time, and I've spoke at many meetings regarding this, along with Councilor Franco. I heard at the Board of Ed budget hearing, people came and spoke about this. We must do something. I think forming a task group and, you know, getting the collaboration of our town to come together and make this a priority and say we have a problem, is the first step to the resolution, and that wouldn't cost a dime. So having an action set forward that allows the RTM, Town Council, Board of Ed, other constituents, concerned citizens to get together around a roundtable despite a budget season coming, costs nothing. And I think we can at least give our town that. That's my thought. It's very important that, as we employ people to work in our town for economic development and bringing in all these new companies, we have apartment complexes going up, and things like that, Growth Over by EB, they have that whole apartment complex, we have the Rustler Mystic Oral School going up. It's important that we retain people and have things to do in the town, so we can build new infrastructure, but if we don't maintain the structures we have, we lose the quality that this town was founded on, and having adequate and abundant sports fields with proper drainage, aquatic plains. Anytime you drive by there after a major rainstorm, we still need proper drainage down there. That's a brand-new facility that flaws half the time. So I feel it's our civil duty as a town and to the taxpayer, and to our children in this town, to make sure that our high school, as we want to market our school, you see a decrease in people playing on our fields, well, maybe it's because they're going to different towns. Because now, there's travel leagues where I don't have to keep my kids in sports here. If I pay extra, I can take them to a different town. We want to retain people in this town to want to live here, young people that want to come here and utilize our fields. This is a hot-ticket item for me. I feel that we are late to the game on it already, and once again, it's no disrespect to anybody, it's a huge town concern. As a female using the facilities at the high school, they're not handicap accessible, the stands, people can't get in them. At what point, as we fund the school and we give increases to the school, we should be going around the table to plan how, at minimum, to start, to make sure our high school represents the money we're putting into it, IB programs, advance this, advance that, but if we don't advance our fields and our physical athletic facilities, we move the school only so far. We can offer all the academics we want. So I feel it would be important to allow a group to form, to how that structure would look, maybe start by researching, coming together. I understand this, Mayor Granatowski stated that two councilors are not here, and I know Rachel's in full support of the fields in whatever capacity, allowing, despite that they're not here, with all respect, that doesn't mean we shouldn't move. I feel that this is something that we can start and at least get the tables going on how that would look. As it stands, Parks and Rec covers some fields, but then the Board of Ed covers another. There's a lot of missing areas in this town. The other thing is, we have the city, going to the roundtable with them, they have facilities on their side. All city residents use town facility schools, therefore, they're using the fields just as often and vice versa, so maybe also including them in this study group to kind of collaborate and see what we can do. I know Ledgerd just got money from the state, Chris Conley was heavily with that over in Ledgerd, and, you know, it might be too late for us this year, but it has happened in other towns, where towns have formed groups and contacted their legislators and came up with a plan. So the problem is, is waiting until after this budget season, all this field work that could be done needs to get started now, so that when we get to the budget season next year, the work was done. We can't wait, and so it kind of has to work, I feel, parallel. So I'm in full support, and I encourage the council to come up with a plan tonight to address this issue of concerned citizens, because that's why we were elected. And I feel the plan should be, it costs nothing to come to the table and to talk about this. I feel the taxpayers have lost a field, even though we have the middle school, which I'm in full support of, they've lost fields. How are we going to make that up? What is our plan? We should have a plan on the table. So that is my thought, and I encourage the council to help with that. Thank you.
Councilor Bumgardner, and then Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 1988, the town voters approved a bond for the purposes of protecting open space here in town. That was well before even I was born, but thankfully, the voters in this town made that decision because they codified that preserving open space and recreational spaces are core value of our community. I'd like to think that that is still something that this council cares about, so it would not be out of the question that if it truly is a priority, you know, we could even put that to the voters and put in together a comprehensive proposal to, you know, to invest in our recreational facilities and our open spaces. So, you know, now with certainly the Merit property offline, there will be a lot more properties going online, including various new school properties, some that may be more suitable for purposes of economic development, perhaps others that are, you know, suitable for recreational facilities. So, you know, I'd like to see, you know, all of the options, and, you know, and that would include all the, you know, school buildings that are no longer going to be used once the middle school be consolidated. So, you know, I just want to thank you for, Mr. Frost, for doing this presentation, and, you know, if we can, I struggled finding the, kind of, the 2014 report online, and, you know, hoping you could send it over.
I'll provide all copies to the town manager to distribute for both studies.
Thank you. And, Mr. Locken, obviously, thank you for the work you do with, you know, the town, and know that you have support, at least on my end. Thank you.
Councilor Heed.
I'll just speak in support of pursuing some kind of effort to come up with a new revised master plan, something that identifies properties that you'd like to have, either private or public or whatever. But obviously, it needs to be something cost-effective, so if it's one giant field with 16 different soccer fields on it, for example, or if it's, and you do it all at once, or you do one field at a time, whatever is most cost-effective will be the deciding factor for me.
Councilor Ober, you haven't spoken yet. Did you wish to speak to this?
I have a few questions, if you don't mind. What is done, what do you do in conjunction with the Board of Education as far as the fields?
When, typically, there are, there are fields that are under the control of the Board of Ed, and obviously, other ones that are under control of Parks and Rec, and then there are even still other ones, like the churches, or the YMCA, or, you know, other fields that exist in town that we don't have any control of. But our relationship with the Board of Education, we don't have any responsibility for that. The use of the, each school's fields... The use of the, each school's fields start, the request starts with the principal of that school. Once the principal says the school is available, then they, you know, move forward, and if it's a organization that has insurance on file and whatnot, then they can get a permit. With Parks and Rec, I think we, we try to be a little bit of, of assistance to people. Oftentimes, when, when you've got a volunteer who's working in a youth sport league, and they're looking for a field, we know what fields we have. We're also aware of what fields are available at the Board of Ed, so as we hear that, you know, XYZ school has given permission to a particular youth sport team to use that field, our Parks guys will oftentimes help lay out that field, or, you know, line it for the first time, or whatever, so that can be maintained. But then we, then we prioritize our, you know, the fields that we give out based on what the Board of Ed does. So we, we try to collaborate, I'd say, from the, from the school's standpoint, I don't think they have that same capacity to have kind of a, a community, overall community use, you know, perspective on that. You know, the, the principals are trying to manage, you know, the, the educational process in the school and trying to do, do their best to just manage their facility. They're, they don't have the, the continual back-and-forth feedback with the youth sport organizations that Park and Rec has. So, yes, we, we don't have any responsibility, but we try to assist various organizations in obtaining field space that meets their needs. So some, sometimes it's with us, sometimes it's with Board of Ed, but we try to, again, manage that as best we can and allocate our resources according to what schools have decided that they are doing.
I would, I have a couple of questions, but what I would say at this point is, I personally think that it would be good to have a group that are working on thoughts and proposals and so forth, but to me, that's a little short-sighted because of the fact that we've got to have an idea where we're going to put whatever we might put together. So since we don't have the merit property, would seem like the best thing to do is to figure out, okay, what's the next choice of land? We do have a lot of open space, and we may be able to use some of the open space. I know that under certain provisions, there are some of it that can be used for recreation. So it would seem we need to do the research into what we could possibly get. That, you know, would be, certainly, it's going to be a place that's going to need work, and, you know, but we've got to have a location. When you have a location, then it's a little easier to get that group that's working to move that forward, you know, here. If you get a group, that's great, because that makes it all more accessible to happen. So I think that those two things need to go hand-in-hand. I know this is a hard question, but what would you cut back on in order to make this happen? Is there anything that would be plausible to say, okay, we've got to cut back on this in order to make this happen? Have you thought about that at all?
If you're asking me if I've thought about how I can not serve the community in some way, no. So I guess, for me, it's an and, it's not an or. It's, it, this is, the programs and services that we offer now are essential services that contribute to the quality of life in this community, and, no, I, I don't spend a lot of time thinking about what it is that I can stop doing that's going to negatively impact the community.
Okay. That's, that's a fair answer. Might think about it in the future. It was something else, oh, as you're doing this, I know this is probably, but there's another need with fields that I, I think has not been addressed at all, but I, in the future, would like to see a cricket field. We have a very large community now of people that would like to play cricket, and I don't know of any place that they're able to do it at this point. Maybe there is, and maybe you're working with them already. That makes me happy. Where are they doing that?
Right now, they're playing a little bit behind the Groton Community Center, but we actually looked, I met some, a gentleman from the cricket community just, I think it was last week, and we, we actually looked at how we might squeeze something into Aquatic Plains Park in between two of the big rectangles. We also looked at other potential work that's being done behind the Groton Community Center right now with the playground and stuff that's being installed. So how we might orient that and get a legitimate cricket field there. So, yes, there, as you look at the, the athletic field needs, yeah, the cricket demand, I don't think was a part of the study in 2014. It, it certainly is factoring into our thoughts in 2020.
Well, I guess the main things with me is finding an area where we could do the fields. I don't have any idea what the plan is for the school down over the hill. What other one am I thinking of?
Grasshopper Tech?
No.
Corchester.
Corchester. Personally, I think that that area would be wonderful, to do something with your multiple fields. You know, the school's going to go away. That would be one that I, I would think would be good for the town to tear down and put an athletic facility in there. Would be just a great opportunity, but...
We have been talking about that. That, that's been the lead idea.
Good. It's, it's, to me, it's perfect. Might be a little wet, but you can accommodate that, I think, knowing more about what you've got to do with the ground. So I would be more than happy to work towards making that happen, and using something that we have, something that's flat, it would be open, and very visible to people coming into Groton. And we have other things happening across the street. Putting all that together could be just an absolutely phenomenal opportunity for the town. So I think that, I think that the two entities need to work together and then come back and, and talk with us. I would, I would encourage the group, I would encourage the search, and I, I would hope to keep this conversation going, so that we can find a way to make it happen. I don't know if a study, I think we have what we need. We know what the situation is. We know what is good and what isn't good. Now we need to say, okay, we've got this group over here that's very interested, we need to find a location over here. We work towards getting all on the same road.
So, Mr. Burt, as town manager, would you prefer that your staff work on this, or would you prefer that it be volunteers from the council? I'm assuming RTM would want in, working with the staff. What is your preference of the...
I trust Parks and Rec to know who the key players are and to form a group to look at it.
So you, so then, your, your preference would be to let staff entertain this? Okay. Did you, I'm sorry.
I was going to add that, just going back to what could be cut, yeah, nothing can be cut from Parks and Rec. If anything, as we're trying to do more for those who don't have money to utilize our programs, we're probably looking at shifting more money into the general fund over time, but we definitely don't have places to cut there, though.
I, I don't mean to speak for you and apologize if I, if I say incorrectly, but I think she meant if we were to build the fields, what would you cut in order to pay for the fields? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah.
So not, not to do the study, or to figure out where we could put fields?
Right. I'm not, I'm not saying, oh, well, we're going to get rid of this, we're going to get rid of that, but it's, it's, I, I, we constantly have to look at things as we go forward. Do we eliminate this in order to make this happen? And any suggestions you have in the future, which show that you're making the effort to try to assist us in making a good decision?
Mr. Burt?
Just, we have, we've been having those discussions in our budget meetings, and looking at that, and honestly, we're behind on Parks and Rec, on maintaining what we have. We're not putting enough money into Parks and Rec, so we're looking at increasing dollars there.
Okay, so, what, what I'm hearing is that, trying to collect everybody who spoke, I don't think anybody is opposed to Parks and Rec. Okay, so that's a given. That's a good thing, right? Different areas as to how eager we are to put money into this, but I don't think anybody's opposed to having staff look into this. Is there any opposition to having staff look into this further? No. Okay. So is that enough direction, Mr. Burt?
Yes, and I would keep in mind that funding is limited, and it's likely to be a multi-year plan.
Thank you. Thank you.
And one thing I'm going to need, you know, we've got a CIP for the football field for, I think it's $200,000, but there's some talk of should it be turf or not, which is significantly more expensive and didn't go through the CIP, so I, I need some input pretty fast here on whether to, to, you know, hold up all that work until we have more information, so just something to keep in mind.
So you don't need that tonight, correct?
No, no.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much.
I have one more question.
You have one more question, and Mr. or Councilor Perry also has a question.
Or one more. I, I think also, it's not as much as like the land that we're looking for, as what I'm seeing from what was read tonight is maintaining what we have, bringing it up to code so that it's safe and functional. Also, looking at that study at that one park where there was two diamonds, there was already an example of how we could increase it to three. We didn't need any more land, it was just the structure. And I also think the other key thing is making sure the proper people around the table, making sure Board of Ed and Parks and Rec are working together to come up with a plan. But I think, looking at the high school repairs, and looking at some of those fields that you identified alone, without looking for more land, it's already there. It's just maintaining, we haven't been maintaining what we have. And that's, that's a starting point of discussion, just right there, before we even think of land. Land, too, but I think we have a lot to already work with.
Councilor Perry.
I was just going to suggest that as long as you've got a, a, a task force looking into this, you look into developing an ice arena so that the kids can play hockey.
Here, here.
And curling, and figure skating, and one other thing, perhaps polo field, with stables and horses.
So this is a wish list now?
Yeah. These are things that we should do if we want to make Groton the competitive sport center of Southern New England.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you coming out.
I will say, I was on a curling league in Northern Michigan.
Were you the broom or the...
Yeah, I would be both.
All right. Yes, Mr. Locken.
Madam Mayor, I guess from my standpoint, if it's a staff-led effort, I guess I would, the first thing, one of the keys to success for me would be to have members, perhaps from the council, the Board of Ed, the RTM perhaps even, who are interested in this topic, to, to, to take part in meeting with the folks from the high school, and meeting with the booster club, and meeting with professionals like Mr. Frost, and representatives from youth sport league. So if you see an email from me asking for your interest in participating on this task force, I guess we'll call it, I would appreciate some affirmative responses. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Burt indicated we're going to have you take the lead on this, and I know...
Good point, Rachel.
She already texted saying she's all in.
Yeah.
So, so, Mr. Locken, if you would, Mr. Burt asked that you take the lead on this, so if you would do the reaching out, and then councilors can respond as appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Locken. We are on to 2020-77 on page 14, and we are on Councilor Parker, I believe.
Yes. To recommend a resolution to accept the Mystic Coastal Access Plan, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and then seconded by Heath. And we are at seven councilors at this point. Hello there, and staying with us? Would you like to introduce, please?
Yes, so, good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services, with me here tonight is Chad Frost from Kenton Frost and Associates. We've been working...
Mr. Reiner, can I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
I was hoping Mr. Burt could give us a quick update on the legal status of the review of the coastal access, please.
Sure, there, there are two spots, our attorneys, our, our attorneys reviewing the powerhouse condo, as well as the Fort Rachel area, as to what rights we have to access. That's taken a while, I've kept council updated on that. Obviously, the public hasn't been fully updated. We're hoping to have final legal opinions in the next few weeks, you know, so without knowing what our rights are, what access we have, this plan, you know, leaves out those, as of now, we don't know of having any rights to access. So that's how that plan has to be structured at this point.
So the intent of this referral, then, was what, please?
The main thing is the look style of what we want to do with, with the access. It may change. For instance, we just had a meeting with Mystic Museum of Art the other day, talking about trails and, and access. They're, they're indicated all in on wanting to do something, so, you know, some of the access points, there's actually multiple points of things we want to improve in access, so there'll be more to come. This is a starting point, a jumping-off point of, and the main thing is, do you like the style, and do you want us to pursue this field?
And there's no...
And John, correct me if I mischaracterize.
And there's no request for funding at this point to carry forward any of this?
There's a CIP, no, not tonight, no.
Not tonight, though.
Correct, not tonight. So the main...
Thank you very much.
Yes, no, I'm not asking you for any money tonight.
Just to clarify.
Yes, just to clarify. This is a project, we wanted to identify what we've come up with to the council now, as we, as the manager said, we do have a CIP project in that would help implement this. But the main purpose of this project was, we, the town, have been getting coastal access ways since the early 1990s, and at the, through when properties are waterfront-based use, converting to something that is not water-dependent. They have to give some type of access or easement along the waterfront, to the waterfront. And the Planning and, Planning Commission, now Planning and Zoning Commission, has been getting these access ways since the early 90s. And one of the things that's been difficult is, most of the signage for those areas is like this, our traditional coastal access sign, and it didn't have a lot of great connectivity. People weren't sure where things started, where they ended. So working with Chad and his firm, looking at how can we create some very clear delineation and markings showing where the coastal access areas are, where they go through, excuse me, as well as kind of putting pen to paper, looking at how those missing linkages or connections between properties, how can we identify those now, so when properties come in and change use or redevelop, that we could then have something in a plan that would then further getting those better access points. So that was the main thrust, the main drive behind this project. And Chad was here tonight to kind of just give an overview of the recommendations of what we came up with the plan, some of the different signage types, some of the markings, and ways that we can identify how the public can see this great amenity and resource along our waterfront in downtown Mystic.
Thank you.
So with, no further ado.
There you go.
And I believe everybody has this in their packet?
Yes.
So I'll try not to take too long. I think everybody does know a lot of the coastal access, Mystic Art Association was mentioned, this is the beautiful walkway that they have improved over time along the front, that's part of it, and then the boardwalk down to Fort Rachel is the picture on the right-hand side. These are just some other locations. Obviously, there's varying degrees of what that access looks like and how public it feels. There are certain places that fences have gone up, or planters have been put in, and it feels a little bit less public than maybe it should. As John mentioned, this was, I, I think, an absolute awesome acquisition over time by the planning department, planning and zoning. When you look at this map, so that's basically the drawbridge at the top of the map and Fort Rachel at the bottom, and the thin orange line are all of the easements that have been acquired. And that's a very impressive coastal public access acquirement over time, when you look at that. It's very significant, however, it's also fragmented, as John mentioned. There's, there's pieces that are missing, and then there's also just the inability to read it as a, as a full unified thing, and it's very unknown to the public. So looking a little bit closer at the existing conditions, the orange indicates where the public currently has public access, and then the little blue and white squares are where their current posted coastal access signs are, like John indicated. And we have indicated also, if this works, that's, that is the powerhouse. As was mentioned, there was an approved coastal access that was never built, and whether or not that access has expired with the permits or not, I think is up for legal discussion. So our recommendations, nice, so linkage public access, the big thing, form a cohesive network all the way through. How we're going to do that without spending a ton of money and buying property is wayfinding signage, so that goes with logos, signage, and landmarks. We think we can do it pretty simply with enhancing the public understanding and awareness of it, and once the public has a greater understanding of this network that really exists, we think the enhanced walkability of downtown will be pretty significant. People can park in the center and be able to walk all over, both visitors and residents So our proposed... So our proposed connections are pretty obvious, in that we're connecting the orange areas, we're adding a lot more signage, and we're creating what we're calling landmark signs, directional signs, and pavement markings. So it's important from a wayfinding perspective to be able to see from where you are, the next thing that you're going to, right? If you have a sign where you are, and the next sign is around two corners, you have no idea that's where you're supposed to go, and especially when you're walking on the foot. So the desire of this plan was to be able to make it pretty obvious for any user to be able to know where they're going from start to finish. When we talk about a landmark sign, we were thinking about the history of Mystic, we want it to be something that means something to us in this community. And Mystic really formed from the wooden shipbuilding, the whaling, and that industry, and it was once was quoted in a book, Mystic was produced more notable captains, a greater tonnage of fine ships, and a large number of important sailing records than any place its size in the world. So Mystic really is, is a very important place in wooden shipbuilding history. So we look to the wooden shipbuilding for inspiration and how we can do landmark signs. The big picture there, that is the Mayflower this past summer, as it was undergoing restoration at the seaport, and these little shipknees, there's always, there's inspiration everywhere within wooden boats, the shipknees are what caught our eye as a potential great opportunity for landmark signs. And we see the ability to use those both in what's called a standing sign and a hanging sign. So we could use that wooden ship's knee, which is the brace, it is used to hold up decks when it's hanging, and it's used to hold up masts when it's standing. And interestingly enough, there are actually buildings around the area that used ship's knees to hold up the second floor, because when the shipbuilding industry kinda went away, they all became building builders, and they started building buildings just like they built boats, and we have shipknees in buildings around here, which is pretty fun. So that was the inspiration behind the landmark signs. This is a possibility of what that landmark sign could look like, again, using the Pantone colors that we're come up with, the marking for the rest of the town, an identifiable sign, the map with some key points on it for the hanging sign. This is what that possibly could look like, this is at the drawbridge, where it can be mounted on the building and seen from both sides, this would be a transparent polycarbonate, so it would be light when the sun is hitting it. Looking the other direction, what it could possibly look like. And then we have the standing signs, again, as landmarks around the area in key locations to be able to be significant wayfinding. This would be at one of the condo locations, so people can walk right up to them and see them, this is at the police restroom facility, next to the Army Navy store in downtown. And then we got down to directional signage, so landmark signs, there's fewer of those, they're important, they're larger in certain places, then we have the directional signage. As you can see, that's one of our existing coastal access signs, which doesn't really call attention, doesn't really let you know that this whole thing is accessible as well as the walk down there. And so when we look for inspiration for what would be a good opportunity for signage, for directional signage, the thing that kinda hit us in the face were all of these piers. They're obviously everywhere along the waterfront, and they're very ubiquitous. So the idea was, instead of just posting a sign on it, or putting a sign that can be taken off, by either painting or doing a wrap around the piers, we can label them all with coastal, Mystic River Walk Access, Coastal Public Access, and make it an identifiable logo throughout the coastal area. And we recommend putting them frequently enough that it is very obvious as to where the path goes and where the public is allowed. And then you get places like this, so this is, again, the parking lot with the Art Association, that is their building. Here, there's an existing sign, right there, that's one of our current signs, which you can't hardly see, we could put in a new pillar here, that would be the landmark sign at a major intersection, and then you can see another sign down the way, so you have continuous signage throughout. Another example, the other end of the Art Association. And then the final one is, we have a lot of pavement to cross, and instead of putting signs everywhere, one great option is pavement markings, and we're recommending a four-inch-wide blue paint stripe through parking lots or along walkways, just like the history trail in Boston, it's very simple to follow, it's very inexpensive to install, and very effective. Additionally, we can also do maps, the same type of sign that we put on a building, you can now have printed on a foil back, basically sticky back, that can be applied to the surface, and it has non-slip built into it, so you can put the same map on the ground plane as well. And this is what that could look like at the alleyway, the potential map, and then the paint line going down the center. We did choose blue, obviously, for the water and coastal access, but also because it's not a traditional pavement marking, so it shouldn't confuse motorists driving through there as well. These are two opportunities, looking through a parking lot where you do have the signs and the stripe together, again, the alleyway down to the coffee shop, past the Army Navy store, the opportunity to still put some labels on it. And then this is the overall plan, which calls out all the individual locations for both the landmark signs, the directional signs, and the painted areas. So with that, any questions?
Thank you. So again, if we vote on this motion this evening, this is not appropriating any funding, this is just saying, yes, we like the idea, when we get the money, this is what we wanna do.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Councilor Perry.
I don't like the idea, I love it. I have a question about the sidewalk signs, how durable are they? People will be walking over them, and one of them showed it in a driveway, cars will be driving over them, they gonna stand up to that for a period, how long a time?
Well, it would be traditional epoxy paint, just like you use for any other pavement markings, so just as we have to repaint parking lot stripes and roadway stripes, we'd have to repaint the stripes there as well, over time as they wear out. But generally, you know, a good 10 years, and paint is the cheapest thing we can do.
Oh, I know, I'm just wondering, it seems to be difficult to paint over those because they're complex designs, the trailways showing and all, that's neither here nor there, I just would like to tell you that, from my point of view, this does open up, and it makes it clear to everyone that the shoreline is available to them, and I think it would be a delightful walk for most people. I can't tell you, I think this would be a great addition to the town of Mystic, an improvement.
Councilor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you, Mr. Frost, for coming out, and Mr. Reiner, for the presentation as well. Just a few questions, I noticed in the master plan, Fort Rachel Marina, it doesn't go all the way to the end of the public road in the, in the study, why was that?
Based on our analysis of the deeds, this is where we felt comfortable going. As legal, you know, can dig further into all those deeds and what's transpired, they'll provide you a better answer than I can.
And right now, there is public access to a gazebo that's on that property, and that's kinda the main access point that we wanna direct people to through this master plan.
Until we know we have legal access, I don't wanna put someone's private property onto a plane either.
So, and again, I struggle with approving a plan that we don't know, again, what the legal status is of certain deeds, that is the proposed motion on the agenda, but I do have several other questions.
And this is a plan that's an aspiration, some of these properties, we may never get access through, and that's, we're not saying that we're going to take anything away, or property rights away from anyone, this is what we aspire to, just as with our plan of conservation and development, we aspire to certain goals here, we aspire to have connections through these areas. And what happens with the Fort Rachel Marina, or the Powerhouse, I mean, those are things that will be worked out over time, and we can still move forward with connecting all of these other pieces and having signage through them.
And if I can add to that, part of the idea is that this signage be used as the new, the new signage to, you know, announce all of the public access, so whether legal determines it can be there or not, or looking forward, when new properties come available, this is the type of signage that you would put in, not necessarily that it has to be put in every little location shown on this master plan, more of this is the concept and the idea of how we can link it all together, and what signs you might use to do that.
It'd be very easy to add something like Fort Rachel, and you wouldn't need to alter the plan, it'd be easy to mimic this design.
The idea is to give, basically, staff the guidebook to say, these are the signs, just like right now, when somebody comes in front of Planning and Zoning and they have to grant public access, they're given that sign and said, you have to post a sign. In the future, they might be given this document to say, here's the landmark sign, if that's appropriate for a certain location on that property, here's the directional sign, and here's the paint we want you to put down. So it's a guiding document as much as it is going back and replacing what's currently there.
But what I can't understand is how the town can stop any one individual from walking towards the end of a public road. I mean, the public road simply ends at the railroad tracks, and so I get, that's a discussion for another time, but-
There is some question to that, it's not figured out yet.
Okay. All right, secondly, it says in the, this plan that there is, that you're looking to propose a link between the Mystic Art Center as well as the condos, just, I guess you would call it as part of the steamboat wharf. Wouldn't it be already, currently coastal public access?
Are you, are we talking this area, so this is the Art Association?
Yep.
Are you talking the north, this connection through here?
Yes.
So, again, it's through private property, it's public parking area, so, again, legally, the public has the right to access and park and walk through there, we definitely wanna have a legal opinion to make sure that as soon as the town goes and paints a stripe and encourages the public, that you're not taking someone else's rights.
Again, I struggle with approving any coastal access plan without having that input, so just wanted to remind that to the council tonight as well. Currently, there are no trespassing signs at Powerhouse condos, they are there incorrectly, they should not be there, and it hinders public access to those sites. Do you, we know the status of, as to why they haven't been removed, and also why coastal public signs that have been posted there in the past by the town have been removed?
So, we have no proof that there were previous coastal access signs located at the Powerhouse, we have a very detailed sign, pictures of all signs that were located before. There was, as Chad had mentioned in his presentation, a much earlier approval for a dock behind the Powerhouse that was never built, and there is some confusion over the issue of coastal access through the Powerhouse's property, that's something the town attorney is looking into, but we can't just exert public access through private property without proof that we actually have the right to access that private property, so the town attorney is looking into that.
All right. And, you know, lastly, you know, while not included within the, kind of, the coastal public access, you know, system that the state sanctioned back in the early 90s, there is, you know, there's an opportunity for folks to access, you know, the waters just north of that, I believe, off of Gravel Street, and there is a sign that where, you know, you can take a boat out, or a small canoe, it went missing recently, and the town quickly put it back up, so, you know, thank you for that, but, missing from that is a coastal public access sign, which probably should be there, so, you know, I would certainly encourage the town in the interim to also put a sign there, and also put in place all of the missing signs, I think in the last 15 years, based on discussions I've had with multiple constituents in Mystic, they told me that more than a dozen signs have gone missing, several have been stolen, and, you know, and, you know, it's easy to pin the blame on young people who are just, you know, goofing off, but in some cases, it does seem malicious and intentional. So I hope, you know, collectively, the town and whatever resources we have, we can kinda get to the bottom of this, 'cause, you know, I think it's important that we offer, you know, people throughout the entire town, the opportunity to access our coastline without any hindrances, so I will withhold any further questions, 'cause I know I've asked many, but, and I hope many other councilors ask some questions too.
Mr. Bird.
Just to mention, we did recently replace several of the missing signs that we could prove were there and that we had access to. So at this point, till we have further legal review, we're at the point of what we can do on the signage.
And lastly, I would like to submit some documentation I received from a constituent into the record, that can go in conjunction with the meeting minutes, 'cause I think it's important.
I haven't, have I seen it?
Uh, no, but I'm, I'd like to submit it into the record.
Has anybody else seen it?
Nope.
Yeah, we'd like, if you could, please send it to everybody?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, just to clarify, the concerns are approving a plan for which we don't have the legal basis, I'm just restating your concerns.
Correct.
Correct.
And so it was also my understanding, I know it was either last council meeting or two council meetings ago, I had asked the question when we're going to receive an update from our town attorney on this issue. I was then told by the town manager that we were going to receive that update in the, you know, this meeting, unfortunately, the town attorney did not complete that research, and so, you know, I would think that in order to approve this coastal public access plan, we are, you know, we have it fully vetted by the town attorneys, considering there are some, clearly some legal issues with, you know, certain properties and locations that are part of that coastal public access, and are clearly in dispute.
Okay, so, so the issue that you're having with, just to, I wanna make sure I understand where you are with this, so the issue is the placement of the path and not with the overall design?
No, absolutely, and I think I may have cleared, you know, I commend Mr. Frost for his creativity and his work, and, you know, much of the service he's already done with the town, so.
Thank you. Councilor Bordeloff.
Thank you so much, this is a great presentation, again, Mr. Frost, stemming it into the other presentation that you just sat with, this is all part of economic development, the use of our fields, driving people to come into our community, for sporting, having a clear-cut thing like this, where people can enjoy the waterfronts, I mean, growing up here, you know, you see a lot of people come and they walk to the shops, they eat the food, and then they're like, now what? You know, and this kinda says, oh, we can go down here, and some do and some don't, but this is a nice way to kinda open it up, make it more welcoming, make it not, you know, just be that you just go, when you're done shopping, you can continue on a bit, so I think it's very exciting. I do have, sure, some of the concerns that Councilor Baumgartner has is with, you know, having that process kinda defined and finalized, also looking forward down the line, hoping that our records are much better as this unfolds, how we're gonna keep track of these properties, I think. It's one to say we have a signage system now that we're gonna put in place, but it's another to say, how is the town gonna responsibly keep a hold of those things so that we don't lose opportunities and waterfront access from poor records or misunderstandings, or I think it's our due diligence to make sure as new councils, new town managers, new economic development, that we have a system in place, or a record to start, maybe a database or something, and that, I think, would help us to keep this kind of, 'cause signs can blow away, maps can fade, people change with time, but making sure we have some way to cross-reference all of this would be very helpful. I do like the use of, using some of the historical pieces that you presented, I think, you know, once again, this is gonna give people something else to do down there. Also, another consideration that came to mind as I sat here, is as people travel down there, there already is a lack of trash cans down there, equally recycled bins with trash receptacles that are properly marked, looking at like Westerly's system, it's much more clean-cut, I, you know, I think as you move further away from the center of town, there's no trash receptacles down there, making sure that we have, if you're adding more people moving down there, making sure people have access to dispose of trash and things, so I don't know if that can be, I know this is just a signing thing, but I'm just thinking, maybe with the signing, there could be something added next to some of those poles.
Mr. Bird, Attorney Callahan's records that he's reviewing go back to the 1700s, correct?
For Fort Rachel, yes.
Yes, thank you.
And they're difficult to read and interpret.
I guess we'll follow, that my concern is, I was just finished, I was, you asked, my thing is, is that, that was 1700, but the council from 1979 didn't do anything, the council from, you know what I mean, so those records may be old, I'm just hoping that we can kinda keep those records a little bit more safeguarded-
Correct, in the future.
In the future.
Yes.
And a little sooner than waiting.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Councilor Heed.
So, two things first, this is really great, I mean, I'm thinking as a tourist, if I- I mean, I'm thinking as a tourist, if I were to come to town, I would know West Main Street. I'd know to go there into the drawbridge and the ice cream shop and all that. But to go beyond that and go down the coastal access, I would never think to do that as a tourist, you know. Even as local, you don't know, like to your point, you don't see the signs. So, the ideas with the paint and the standard markers, that, that's really brilliant. I wonder if Stonington's side would consider doing something like that as mirror image, totally separate from our program, obviously. But I would want to ask in regards to the legal questions, should we postpone the vote on this to approve it or are we able to go forward with legal questions pending?
I was going to suggest we amend this to add a phrase and you tell me what you think.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Because I'm under the timeline for any CIP decisions, it's more about the design and style. We don't have necessarily, or it could be pending attorney review or some, whatever you want to say.
How about if we just said something like, to accept the design and style of the Mystic Coastal Access Plan? And then that leaves the legal questions to be settled by the attorney and we could come back later to do other things. So I'm going to make a, do you wish to?
Knock yourself out.
I'm going to make a motion to insert the words "design" and "style" between "accept" and "the." So we agree to recommend a resolution to accept the design and style of the Mystic Coastal Access Plan. So moved. Second. Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Parker. We will vote on the amendment. I'll read it one more time.
Please.
Let me think. So this is a draft resolution, so we can just vote once and then you'll clean up the language.
Right.
All right. So we're going to vote on the, the motion to recommend a resolution to accept the design and style of the Mystic Coastal Access Plan is the motion on the floor.
Discussion.
All those in favor, I called the vote, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay.
So moved unanimously. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. I'm sorry, I had called the vote, I apologize.
Okay, but I just would like to make a comment. I hope that this will in no way indicate to you, I hope that this in no way will indicate to you that we do not wish to proceed with this. We do, we are waiting for a legal opinion on one segment. But this is something, I think that there is a consensus that this is moving forward for the town of Groton and particularly the community of Mystic. So I think it's a, it's a great thing and we should press forward. Don't think that we're saying no.
Okay. We are at 8:10 and I believe Mr. Frost is done for the evening. Do you want to take a five-minute break so that Mr. Frost can take down his equipment?
This is staying up, this is ours.
Oh, you're staying?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We could pick up five minutes.
So, in recess for five minutes. Thank you. We are back from recess at 8:18 and we are on to item 5C, 2020-78, Police Department Update. This is page 35 and it just gives a brief introduction. No action is required. Chief, if you'd like to introduce yourself and your coworker, your associates.
I'm Chief LJ Fizaro. With me is Deputy Chief Paul Gately. The town manager informed me that the council would like an update. I think this is something you're looking for on a regular basis from the department heads. So I put together a little slide. It's not all-inclusive, but just some talking points for some of the things that we have going on in the, in the police department. The second page is some photos and I'll be able to highlight some of those things for you in the, during the course of my presentation. First, some of the issues that, that I think are important for you to know about is we do have some vacancies in the department, both in dispatch and in the police department. We're fortunate that our dispatch center has a host of very talented and seasoned individuals that staff it, but as is the case with, with each organization, there's a lifespan for each one of our, our individuals in those positions. And we have a few individuals that I anticipate in the next year or so, or in some cases maybe even less, that may be taking advantage of the opportunity to retire. We also have a couple of vacancies that have existed for a couple of months now. One of our dispatchers, a very good dispatcher, had gone to a part-time status to address some personal needs. So we need to fill those positions. We, we serve several communities, you know, not just Groton as a whole through the dispatch center, but also the town of North Stonington. We also receive 911 calls as a primary station answering point for our area. So we do get 911 calls that go to other communities and our dispatchers are very adept at it. But keeping that fully staffed is important. As we talked about during the budget process, the more people, the better staffing means a reduction in the overtime and vice versa. So, right now, because of some of those vacancies and other people being out of work for other reasons, we're looking at moving forward. We've conducted some interviews. We have a rolling hiring process that, that is administered by Human Resources. They give us names of individuals. We conduct a testing process which consists of interviews and then ultimately they come to me to, to kind of develop an order, merit list of how we're going to hire. Similarly, with the police department, we have, we're well-staffed right now, but we do have some folks out of work for a few reasons where we do look at replacing in the future. We have one vacancy and I've learned recently that we will be, experience another vacancy in the near future when, when Captain Sinagra retires. He's, he's got a planned retirement coming up in the next several months. That will, that will lead to some promotions inevitably in filling some of those vacancies. Next on that list of issues are the budget, obviously, like every department in the town right now, we're putting together our budgets. We presented ours to the town manager. And in that are some capital improvement projects which I think are the things we need to think about for the future. One is to work on our, our locker room, our mail locker room. It's original to the building. It was built in 1977. Officers use that every day, at least twice a day when they come into work, when they prepare for their duties as a police officer, where they store their equipment. It's, it's in need of an overhaul. Ventilation in there is a little bit in need of improvement, but they shower, they clean themselves, they prepare for work. Sometimes they have to come back there if they have to change their uniforms. So it's, it's basically their home away from home and giving them a, a good workspace or an area to prepare for their duties is, is important. Another capital improvement that you'll see from, from us is really for the building. Some of the access, access cards and entries into the department need to be replaced and I think the public works has a pretty good plan for that. So, another issue that we've been dealing with on a pretty regular basis is, is something that I think you heard a little bit about in the prior presentations, parking in Mystic. I can report to you, we've had a holistic approach to that. The town manager's been involved, we've been involved, we've worked with planning and zoning. And we've also worked with our partners across the river with the town of Stonington. I've been in close and constant contact with Chief Stewart from the Stonington Police Department because we realize that this, the issues we experience on our side of the Mystic River Bridge are the same that they experience. So we want to come up with a holistic approach to address this. We also had interns in the fall that did a, an audit of parking on both sides and came up with about 1,400 spaces. We've also worked with some of the, or discussed this with some private entities to include representatives from the Chamber of Commerce and the Mystic Merchants Association. So, we're, we're trying to develop something that is reasonable and addresses some of the issues that we have with parking, but we don't, we've also recognized there's no silver bullet. So, that's a continuing and ongoing process where we're, again, collaborating as a group to come up with some ideas. Emergency management.
I just want to mention, we are looking at, Stonington is budgeting, you know, I'm not sure how much farther we can take the, the parking honestly ourselves without professional help. Stonington contacted me and said they're budgeting 20,000 to 25,000 in hopes, and to do a parking study in their side and looking to see if we'd be willing to do it on our side. We think we actually do it more like 15 to 20 for our side, but we are looking at that in a CIP, just to make you aware. But, there's a, there's some really good experts out there that can help us put this together and it is becoming more critical. I know there's starting to be some concerns at the planning commission level about parking there and what I don't want to do is have this ever disrupt development in Mystic. So it's something we need to figure out sooner rather than later.
We've looked at a bunch of things and I don't think we're prepared to move forward on anything right now, but I think at some point in time, we will look to provide more, more fidelity, more detailed information to the council on some of the things that we've learned during our examination of this issue and some things that we think might, might bear fruit in the future if we were to implement them. Emergency management, you know, we've had, knock on wood, haven't had too many bad snowstorms this, this season, but I don't want to jinx us either. But the good news is I have a new snow blower, so you can rest assured, we probably won't have a snowstorm for the rest of the year since I invested in that. That's going well. Lieutenant James B. has been doing a lot of work and some of you may have seen some emails that he's put out. We try to make people aware of some of the more critical issues that are going on, particularly when a significant, significant storm comes, we do put out some information to the town. But that's not to replace or supplant the stuff that you get from local news channels, it's really to augment it and particularly during the day that they may not have the opportunity to see it and know that a snow squall or heavy rains are coming through in the afternoon to just keep them alert. For operations, and that's the bulk of our department, it's patrol function where our officers are out on the streets 24/7. You know, we've, we've tried to do some things to augment their duties. One is this first, the VAIL program. It's the Victims Assistance to Law Enforcement. Basically, it's through Safe Futures. It's the domestic violence outreach that we're trying to do where we have a victim's advocate that rides with our officers. We've given her desk space at the police department. This is new. Not totally new to the region. It started in Norwich a few years ago. Back a couple of months ago, myself and the deputy chief met with Lindsay Michaels, who is the representative that's been working with us. She's been a great addition to the team. One of the things that we identified some time ago in conjunction with Sergeant Rich Sawyer, who really has done a lot of, a lot of work in the field of domestic violence. I'm pretty proud of his actions because he's been a leader in the state on this. He's, he's been recognized by Safe Futures and some other organizations for his efforts. But we recognize that the follow-up is important too when, when people are the victims of domestic violence, they have it in the home, they have children, they have people that are affected and the residual effects of that, that, that trauma that happens when a police officer comes and makes an arrest. Following up and making sure they get the services they need in the future and that they are met with some, some folks that lend an ear, that can provide them with direction and guidance, that is helpful. And that's what this goal was, this program is, is designed to do, is to follow up after the fact and to have an intervention mechanism. And, and so far, it's been working well. We've also reinstituted our traffic unit and this has been extremely helpful. We're trying to rotate officers through that so that their efforts are dedicated towards addressing issues that we get on a regular basis. Citizens will contact the police department or may even contact the town manager's office indicating they have a problem in a certain neighborhood. Speed, heavy traffic at certain times of the day, reckless driving. When we get those, and occasionally you'll get those complaints and usually they're routed to us. What we've done is we've set up a dedicated phone line for our traffic unit. We've, we've got an officer that does it. Not only do they just go out there and write tickets, but they're to look at the problem, to address the root cause. If it's an engineering issue, they try to get the people that are involved in the traffic authority or in public works or DOT involved. They meet with those people in those areas to try and identify what the real issue is. And then they do enforcement. They go out there and they write tickets, they stop cars, they do those sort of things. But they also do some analysis. We have some speed detecting devices that they can employ. We can also have traffic counters that they know how to use. So, we go out there, we want to know what the, the speed is that's common for that road. Sometimes it's a perception issue and we'll educate the people that have, have called and say, hey, here's what we're getting. You know, you're saying there's high rates of speed, but they're really not unreasonable based on the analysis we've done. So, we've rotated now, in our second rotation, it was Officer Snyder first, now it's Officer Brower, he just started today. We also bring them to the traffic authority meetings so that way we have someone that can be tasked pretty much immediately to address issues that are brought up in front of the traffic authority. Community policing, Officer Heather McClellan, and under the supervision of Sergeant Sawyer, who has a couple of roles. Sergeant Sawyer is also our training sergeant, but he's, he's supervising the community policing unit and our school resource officers. Officer McClellan's done an outstanding job and what I really appreciate is the fact that she's networked with other town departments and other agencies to collaborate on some efforts. And one of those most recent ones is something we've been working with Parks and Rec and it's really the dementia support and cognitive awareness program. And that's something that came up really as the brainchild of a, of a couple of individuals from, from Parks and Rec and from us. So they've held meetings. I'll get to it in another part here, but we're, we're looking to garner information from some of our citizens so that if someone does suffer from cognitive disabilities, we're able to identify that. So if they need assistance, we'll know how to get that assistance to them. And what I'm talking about is that we have alerts, voluntary alerts in, in our new CAD and records management system that will point us in the right direction as far as where those people are from. So if an officer or member of the public encounters someone and maybe they've got some cognitive disabilities, if we're called, we'll, we'll have a little bit more insight and information to what the needs are of this individual. Another thing that we've done in the last year, and as of a couple of weeks ago, one of our detectives, Rich Savino, completed an additional three weeks of training that was provided at no cost down in Georgia by the, I'm sorry, in Alabama actually, by the United States Secret Service. Detective Savino has been very adept at doing cyber crime investigations. That's really the wave of the future in law enforcement. We, we see a lot of larcenies taking place through credit card and identity thefts, but really some more heinous crimes that we need to have people with special skill sets to investigate them. So Detective Savino was fortunate enough to be able to attend training provided by the Secret Service last year, again, at no cost. But, but the other part of this, he's received over $35,000 worth of equipment from the Secret Service, again, at no cost to the town. That's all been used in case investigations that he's working as a detective. The trade-off of this is we're part of a regional group again, a task, not really a task force, but a partnership with other local enforcement agencies under the umbrella to some extent of the Secret Service. They do a lot more than just protect the president and dignitaries. They do have a criminal investigation component that dates way back to their inception. So they're very active in this. Our department, Waterford Police, Norwich Police, New London, a couple other agencies have been involved in it from the outset in southeastern Connecticut. So what happens is we have individuals with specialized, specialized equipment, specialized tools and skill sets. So when an investigation needs that level of expertise, they're employed. And they also work on federal cases. One of the highlights on the next page is a case that I'm not going to really get into, but you may have read about in the paper that involved someone from this community that was stationed here that we undertook an investigation with. I can tell you that Detective Savino, as well as many, many members of our detective division, worked closely with federal authorities and he put a lot of effort and time and energy into a case that will result in prosecution for some pretty, pretty heinous crimes. Were it not for that training, we wouldn't have that within our department. We would not have that ability to do it. We would be sending information out and computer data, hard drives, thumb drives, things like that to other entities and wait many months to get that in return. Meanwhile, potentially having a suspect out on the streets may be committing more crimes. That's not the case. We have a guy in-house who can do this and can exploit digital media at, at a very high level and in fact, has been utilized by federal authorities to help assist with some of their cases. So that's, that's a huge feather in our cap and that's a resource, again, that we allow or that we have agreed to allow to be used by other agencies and, as we know, criminals don't know any borders. So the crimes that we experience here in Groton usually move on to other contiguous areas of Connecticut and beyond, outside of Connecticut, foreign countries, that sort of stuff. So, it's great to have that capability. Along that line, we do, we are involved in task forces. We have an officer assigned to statewide narcotics task force. We've had a collaboration for quite some time with federal agencies like the FBI. The good benefit out of that is when we have officers that work on cases that have a federal nexus, they do have authority and it allows us to recoup some of the money that we may spend on overtime through those, through those organizations. So, that has been a benefit to us. I think it's great exposure for our detectives and police officers that are involved in that. And again, it's a collaborative effort with, with federal agencies. Under some of the events, some of the more recent things that we've had, well, coming up on the 19th, we're going to continue our coffee with the chiefs. We do that in partnership with myself and Chief Stewart, but, but it's really led by Mystic Chamber of Commerce. Peggy Roberts puts it together. She finds the location, we go out there, we talk about issues that are common to Mystic, whether you're on our side of the bridge or the other side of the bridge. Because, as we know, many people don't recognize that Mystic isn't really a town, it's a section of two towns. So we talk about things, again, parking, issues that are, that are unique to, to this gem that we both, we both share. Last month, we had the cognitive awareness meeting, as I indicated earlier, and on the second page, you'll see a Facebook post that was a result of that. Maybe a little bit hard to read, but if you go to our Facebook site, you'll, you'll be able to see that. Mystic Irish Parade is just one of those events we have coming up this year. Mystic Irish Parade is just one of those events we have coming up this year. I like to highlight that because we have a lot of events that our department participates in, but from a public safety standpoint. We have a lot of events that go through Mystic, road races, parades. We had the SantaCon back in December. We have things that happen all year long, so it's, we're glad to be a part of it. We want to make sure it's a safe venue for people to attend whatever event they're attending, and that they get a lot out of it. But that's the next one we have on the hopper. We do assign officers, or senior officers, usually a lieutenant or sergeant, to be the officer in charge of that. They develop operations plans. They meet with partner agencies to make sure that everything is done ahead of time, so that when we do have this event, that we do put the proper prior planning into it. Last week, I went to the Downtown Mystic Merchants Association, talked about some of the things that I've talked about here, which is what our department is doing, but about some issues that are important to them: parking and making sure that we can, we make the business environment in Downtown Mystic as attractive as possible. And also get feedback as to things that we can do better, or things that they may need for their businesses. Last week, or two weeks ago, was the Super Bowl, which our officers participated in. Moving over to some of the major projects, some of the things that I know that we've discussed here previously, and that the council has been kind enough to fund. The first is our body worn camera program. That's been going well. I do think I've gotten inquiries from other agencies as to how we feel about this, what we've seen as a result of implementing body worn cameras. I can tell you, I've said this before in mixed company, but I think that as a chief, it probably wasn't the most popular decision I made when we decided to go with body worn cameras for our officers. But it was the right decision, and I think the officers have come to realize that, too. There have been cases that have come to my attention, or to the deputy chief's attention, in the form of complaints about interactions between our officers and people out in the field. And to date, and I'll have you correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't seen anything that has been done inappropriately by our officers. Do you care to comment on that?
Nothing to direct you on, Mr. It's worked out well.
It's been helpful. It's been good for a training tool, especially when we have new officers that are out there for the first time. They can review some of the incidents they've responded to, discuss it with their field training officer. But it also gives our supervisors the opportunity to evaluate their personnel on a regular basis. And again, we have received some complaints from citizens. We've gone back and we've reviewed them, and in all cases to date, the officers have handled themselves appropriately. But the reason I bring that up is, since we've had them for over two years now, the current body cameras that we have are being replaced under the contract that we signed, so these are being refreshed in the next couple of weeks. So all of our officers will get new equipment. It was part of that initial purchase that we made, that was the contract that we had signed. So no extra money, it's what we're paying already. I know this has been of interest to the council. I was informed by Public Works that bids did go out on our dispatch center to address the wall there. Today, in our meeting with the town manager, Greg Hanover did say they received multiple bids for that. The initial bids, the initial request for bids was not responded to. Director Hanover put it out, and now we've got several bids. So I think they're going through that analysis, and we should see something happening on that soon. Our radio system. I will tell you that the radio system has exceeded our expectations. Good example of that was last weekend, when we assisted Groton City Police with an event. I was able to monitor the whole thing from afar. We have the ability to listen on the statewide system. I think it's a huge tool. It's increased our officer safety, because they now have great communications. I can't say it's flawless. There's no system that's flawless, but it's been exceptional. In fact, many other communities have reached out to us to talk about why we went this way, is it cost-effective, does it work well, and it's been exceptional. So I appreciate the state opening that avenue up to us. Couple of weeks ago, we implemented our new CAD and Records Management System. This is the first time in the department's history that we've had an integrated CAD and Records Management System, which is a huge asset to us. Now, as we fielded it, I was cautious, and I still remain cautious with our partner agencies and the fire service and ambulances, as there are growing pains. Any of these systems, when you field them, there are tweaks that have to be made. But the feedback I'm getting has been mostly positive. There have been some things that need to be addressed, and we have been addressing them. We've got a great support mechanism in our IT department, and that's Lou Kuchenbrot. He has been exceptional. He's the guy that's assigned to the police department. He has worked tirelessly. He's been there morning, noon, and night, fixing things. One evening shift, I hung over late because we were having problems with our mug camera integrating. Lou came in from home, fixed it, so I think it's important, when people do exceptional work, that I point that out to you. So if Lou's out there watching, I hope he hears this and understands that we really appreciate having part of the team. But we also have a great company that we're dealing with. Next Gen is a company out of East Haven, Connecticut. They've been a good partner. They have the bulk of police departments now in Connecticut, not all, but they have a lot of Connecticut police departments. So the advantage that we get is a lot of the stuff we're going through now, so many agencies have already been through it. We can talk to them, we can understand what they've tweaked to make things work best for them. I think our officers were a bit anxious, as to be expected when you go to a new system. I talked to some of them just before coming over here today to kind of keep that straw pole going. Is it, what do you think? And the feedback I'm getting is, things are working a lot better now, that they are getting information easier. There are things that they didn't have access to before that they have access to now. For instance, you know, we've deployed some more mobile data terminals in the car, officers can do their reports, they can access information from secure law enforcement sources in their vehicles, as opposed to having to get it always from dispatch. It provides a lot more information to us as far as tracking where things happen, and the reports I'm getting are a lot better. And I'm not talking about the content of them, I'm talking about the clarity. I got some reports from our records division earlier this week that outlined some of the things that we did over the last month, you know, crimes, calls for service. It was much more succinct, and it gave me real information where, in the past, I kind of questioned where our information was coming from, because we had two different sources that didn't really connect. Now it's fully integrated. As part of that, we're also implementing e-ticketing. We've deployed our first in-car printers. And just to kind of illustrate what that means is, you know, good old-fashioned ticket books that I learned with, when you stop someone and you issue a ticket, is this, got to press hard, three copies, you know, it's carbonized. Now, we're in the initial stages of fielding e-ticketing. So basically, it's a roll of paper. If an officer decides to issue a warning or a ticket, it's all done through the computer in the car, printed, and it's passed out to the operator. Now, the advantage to this is we've received these computer printers at no cost. The Department of Transportation provides them, they receive the grant. All of our patrol vehicles will be fielded with them. Right now, we only have a few, just because the order has not come in, and I expect it won't come in for a few months. But they want this. Not only does DOT, but Centralizing Fractions Bureau wants it this way, because it saves the state money as well. When you send one of these carbonized forms up on a transmittal, it takes time to get there, it has to be hand-processed, all the data has to be entered. When the officer leaves their car, and they've hit "Send, racial profiling data," all of the information that is required to send to the court has been completed. There's no lost information, it's all been transmitted electronically. Some other projects that I'd like to highlight and thank Public Works for their responsiveness on are our rear parking lot. They repaged it, looks great, marked it, and they were pretty responsive when we fielded this Next Gen system. We also recognized the need our officers have, because there was cramped quarters where they had the ability to write their reports. If they make an arrest, they only had two small terminals. It was in with our evidence processing stuff. They were able to put up an area where our officers now have much more room. And there's a picture on the second page that I can highlight to do their reports. And IT added a couple of computer terminals, so our officers have more capabilities to get their stuff done. And the last thing on the major projects, I didn't put this on, Deputy Chief Gateley has been working tirelessly to implement new policies. That's kind of his project. It's in between all the other duties he has, so I want to thank him publicly for his work on that. It's not completed, but it's a continuing work in progress. And I think in my council agenda packet, I said that we talk about some contemporary issues. In the last couple of years, the legislature has worked with POST, the Police Officer Standards and Training Council, to implement statewide policies. So many things that are coming out in law enforcement here in Connecticut are the result of either legislative action or initiatives. So a lot of the policies that we're developing now, or working with, are either mandated by state, by POST, or legislature. But the rest are implementing best practices and making sure that our officers know exactly what is expected, but also that we kind of set some procedures out there that make our work a little bit easier in some respects, but certainly more comprehensive in others. And on the next page, just to highlight some of those things, I just took some photos that you were able to see what I was talking about. Going clockwise, in the upper left-hand corner, those two photographs of all the computer equipment, those are things that have been provided by the Secret Service in our partnership with them. And again, we're fortunate, because not everybody that wants to do this is able to do it. It's just that we had an officer that had an aptitude that was selected by the Secret Service here in Connecticut to go to the school. And you can see from that, that is tens of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment that he uses in his daily investigations. And we have another officer that's gotten some of that training, not quite to the level of Detective Savino, but Detective Cuomo is getting some additional training on this stuff as well. So we appreciate that partnership, and I think it's good for the town, and it's good to have that capability. The upper right-hand corner is just a brief article that was put out by the London Day, and again, the equipment that we have played a role in that investigation. Below that is a Facebook post that I mentioned earlier about the cognitive awareness project that our folks have been working on, along with Parks and Rec. Below that, the Mystic Irish Parade, and I think that highlights the collaboration we have with the Stonington Police Department as it comes to Mystic, because that's a host of officers from both agencies that were at last year's Mystic Irish Parade. Below that is our roll call room, and again, Public Works was quickly able to put together something so that our officers have additional workspace to do reports. Lower right-hand corner, although it doesn't really do it justice, but that's Nyannic last Friday during the windstorm. So myself, Lieutenant B., the captain, went out, kind of monitored the areas to see what was going on. We should probably experience lots of trees down limbs, but that was supposed to show you all the white caps, but I can't see it myself, so I'd have to blow it up for you. The middle bottom picture is that e-ticket printer I just mentioned to you, that's in one of our cruisers now. We have a few of them out there, but not all cars are equipped with it yet. Next to that is some of the electronics that are in a modern-day police cruiser. That's one of our cruisers with a new mobile data terminal that's in use by our officers. And right above that is the docking stations for our body worn cameras. Those will be replaced shortly, but that's how it exists now. And right above that, and this is probably the last one I want to highlight, because I know it was an expensive project, but I think I said it to the council last year. If you ask me what a UPS was, I'd tell you it's those guys in the brown trucks driving by. That's it. Those are the three UPSes that we were able to put into the department. They work great. You know, I think, you know, you kind of headed that up. I don't know if you want to make any comments, you had mentioned something earlier. I feel like I'm the only one talking. You're the puppeteer here, I think.
I just feel like, obviously, that equipment, and you all saw it in person, most of you, is just so antiquated and outdated, and I think we're in such a better posture now to have the latest and the greatest equipment in there that's going to sustain us for years to come. So we appreciate it.
Again, that was just, I tried to give a quick one-over-the-world here with the police department, some of the things that are going on, but I'd welcome any questions, if you need, if there's anything I didn't touch on that you need an update on.
Do you have an extra copy of this for the minutes? If not, can you send it electronically?
I do, yep. No, I've got one right here.
Thank you. All right. Who wants to start? Counsel Overy?
Couple of questions.
Oh, I have to correct myself. Deputy said, I hope I didn't say Nyannic, that's no ank.
Yeah, you did say naantic, and I was like, why?
I don't know what I was thinking. It's been a long day. I haven't eaten either, ma'am.
That's okay. Have you heard that? Did you?
Just a couple of quick questions. When you're looking at the parking situation in Mystic, has there been discussions about off-area parking with transportation?
There have been. We've looked at a little bit of everything. Again, we haven't come up with that silver bullet. Yeah, I think everybody would like to find additional areas for parking, but trying to identify those in some solutions is definitely on the agenda. You know, we know where some of the most coveted parking spaces are. We also know that the businesses that have employees down there, they need to have places for their employees to park to. So that is one of those things we've discussed and we've looked at, yes.
Let's see. The parking lot down at TJ's, that's a very, very busy parking lot now, which makes us all happy, but have you thought about occasionally having somebody on foot down there, just to kind of have a presence?
We do. Our officers do get out and walk when they can, but those are the same officers that are handling calls for service. It's, in addition to that parking lot, it's a busy patrol area, because there's a bunch of stores. We get motor vehicle accidents, we get larcenies from some of the commercial establishments. They also respond to other calls, so, you know, when they can, I think you've mentioned that to me before.
Downtown Mystic before.
I'm sorry?
I said I had talked with you about Downtown Mystic before.
And we do, we try to do that, but the officers that have those patrol areas, you know, they have other assignments that they have to complete as well. So when they can, we do encourage our officers to get out and walk around and, you know, get into the businesses and meet people, but...
Well, just keep asking. Do you have a system kind of set up where, you know, we're trying to decide what roads we should be working on in the very near future, and it would seem to me that your officers must be really aware of what needs improvement? And I was wondering if we might set something up that occasionally, you know, you would say to them, "Look, if you're driving somewhere and it's really bad, mention it to me," then you could mention it to John, but, you know, because we don't get on all the streets.
Well, a lot of that's handled at the traffic authority. If we get complaints about certain areas that either there's speed or traffic problems, it's, a lot of times, it's brought up by residents to the traffic authority. We do look at it there. Public Works is involved in that, too. You know, myself and the town manager are the traffic authorities, so a lot of those are brought to our attention. And if officers see something that's a problem, we've got a good relationship with Public Works when we bring it to their attention. Some of the roads, though, and here's one of the misnomers, a lot of things will be brought to our attention on the traffic authority, which we have no authority over whatsoever, and those are state roads. And a lot of the roads here in town that people travel every day, the Department of Transportation has exclusive purview over those. We can make recommendations or suggestions, or contact them and ask for certain things, but ultimately, the analysis is done by DOT on many of those roads that they have jurisdiction over, so...
Okay. I'm just trying to start a little conversation with different things. Are you able to communicate with the Groton ambulance?
Yes.
I had a gentleman come to me that is with the Groton ambulance...
What do you mean by communicate? You mean by radio, or am I...
Yeah, by radio. And he said that it isn't happening, and that they can communicate with the city. I forget who else they mentioned, but they weren't able to communicate with the town.
I don't know what he's referring to. They utilize our dispatch center, so they're talking to the same dispatchers that our officers are too. So if you have more information, I can look into it.
Okay, I'll get you more. But he was pretty emphatic about it, and he works on their equipment, and he seemed to be very knowledgeable.
Is this a person that's a vendor, or someone who provides service to them, or...
No, it's, he's, well, I don't know if he's, you know, rides the ambulances. I have an idea, he's in the service also, this dedicated time that he gives. And he was talking about it, and said that it wasn't happening. So I said I would ask the question.
Yeah, they, we dispatch for them, so they talk to our communication center, so we do have communication with them.
But that's from the dispatch. Can they talk to a placement if they need to?
Not on the radio system. You know, our officers are on a different radio system, they have different frequencies, is that what you're talking about? But we do have, some of our officers have the multiband radios, so that they could talk to them on that if they needed to.
All right. I'll try to get some more information. I know I had one other question in here. Well, I guess that's probably enough. I think overall, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
And one of your officers was very kind to me not too long ago, so I really appreciate all of you.
We're fortunate. We have a good team.
He could have taken my car one day, and he didn't. That little machine you got in your car that says it's not registered over there?
You're not under oath now, but I discourage you from, you know, confessing to anything right now.
I do think you guys do a great job, and I just, the only thing I'm always looking for is a little bit more interaction with the policeman, you know, one-to-one talking to people as they're going along.
Sure. Hey, that's community policing at its, you know, very, very finest element.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke, you didn't want to add anything?
No.
On going into community policing, I noticed that you were having the town versus teen basketball game on Tuesday, the 18th, at the community center.
Yes.
Officer McClelland is organizing that, I believe, along with Parks and Rec.
She is. Yes. Like I said, she's been doing an exceptional job in addition to many other officers, but she's been taking the lead on that stuff.
Thank you. Counsel Gortlon?
Thank you. Thank you for coming to present. This is very helpful and informative. And another way that I saw those radios in use is when they apprehended the gentleman off the highway several months back, almost maybe even a year now, and it was after that. So it's great to see how all the towns were on the radio and collaboration, so that's really important. I know that you spoke a little bit about the lockers. Is there a separate locker room for the female officers?
Oh, yeah.
And is that one, so they're both needing repair?
No, that was actually, the female locker room was built not that long ago when the issue was put on.
That's why I wanted to make sure. Okay. One of the other things, one of the things that I'm constantly advocating for is making sure our town municipality and people that are hired by our town live and work. We hire some. Hopefully, it's hard to get every officer to be from the town, but back when I was in the field of criminal justice, hiring, one of the things was making sure people lived in the town and passionate about it. With that being said, also making sure that the community and municipality which it serves, making sure that it reflects the population. We have a high minority population, and I just would encourage, as you speak of these open positions, to, not saying you're not, but continue to seek not only female, but people of color, minorities of all races to be hired, to have the representation, to look like its community, and continue the community policing, because that is a foundation, getting into some of the urban, more urban areas and really becoming one with the community. Looking at the, where was I at? The wall thing, I know that was approved almost two years ago, so I'm happy to hear that some movement is starting to happen on that, because I know that that was something back on the RTM that was still. I am very excited. I think her name is Officer McClelland, my memory. I see her at the coffee events, and I've attended a couple myself, and one at Starbucks in particular, and that seems to be, was very nice, and having the dogs present is awesome.
As much as we like her to go to things, I think that McDonald's is probably more popular than she is at many of those events.
And with that, any update or information on the dog kennels, any needs down there? What's, how is, are you guys running to capacity? I know it's the cold months and you guys are, you know, when you pick things up, how are we doing on that?
I've had no negative sentiments expressed by our ACO. You know, I got to tell you, it's a pretty good facility. If you go around the area, you look, it's, a lot of thought went into that when it was built. It's, to my knowledge, not ever been to capacity. We actually, our police dogs, when an officer goes on vacation, we utilize that, so it's a fine facility.
And I know that they were thinking about raising some of the costs. I know you guys at the last, last year were talking about raising costs on certain things. I think some tickets were going to go up, or parking tickets, tickets, I don't have my notes in front of me. Also, some of the surrendering fees were going to go up for the canine. Have you seen what that effect has been on the town? How is that? Or how much have you seen?
It's not that lucrative. I mean, we have, we did raise, the council, through council action, approved the raising of parking tickets. I want to say that was about two years ago. It's been, it's been quite a while.
Right.
So these are huge amounts, nominal increase.
And are we predicting any increases coming up anytime soon on any of these areas? Is that proposed at all this year?
No.
No? Okay. Well, thank you for all your hard work and, you know, dedication to the town. I think it's great to see some of the stuff you guys are doing and being up in the community yourself. Thank you.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Coming out. I'd also like to align my remarks with Counsel Gortlon. You had mentioned that the dispatch center also provides dispatch services to the town of North Stonington. You know, given that towns are increasingly more pressured to identify savings and create efficiencies and obviously collaborate with surrounding municipalities to do so, do you see an opportunity for the town to explore, you know, again, the opportunity to work with our surrounding municipalities and on using our dispatch center for theirs?
Sure. You know, to that point, actually, when I was sitting here, I got an email. I've been in some of those discussions with the Chiefs Association. There's a bill that's been proposed about increasing the incentive for communities to collaborate. There's been in recent years some interest in Hartford to get communities to work on some collaborative efforts like that, and one of those has been dispatch, regional PSAPs, that sort of stuff. But, you know, Connecticut Home Rule, a lot of cities and towns want to maintain that on their own. So I think what we're seeing now is some incentivizing being done by the legislature to say, hey, you know, if municipalities work together for this, there's more benefit to them. And we do see that right now. We do see that through working with the town of North Stonington, with the City of Groton, and the agencies that we dispatch through. We do fire departments, Groton ambulance, Mystic River ambulance, the departments, fire departments here in town, as well as North Stonington ambulance, you know, Groton Point Police. So we do have that collaborative effort now, and I do see it as being beneficial. But again, it's independent decisions. It's not, it's not something that we can force on people.
Absolutely. Well, and lastly, you know, as someone who served in the legislature, who supported the pretty comprehensive police accountability bill, you know, that mandated, you know, the body cams, it's really refreshing to hear a police chief state pretty emphatically that, you know, you're completely behind it and have been supportive of, you know, that measure from the get-go. So just like to personally commend you for that, and, you know, many others in the town who aligned with my remarks. And thank you, Captain, as well for your service to our community and, you know, and the great work you've done on the radios and getting, you know, upgrading our infrastructure here. So, and please extend that also to the rest of your department as well. Thank you.
The department appreciates the support of the council. You know, we're fortunate. We have some really good officers. As Counsel Gortlon, we're in the market for more good officers, so please point them in our direction if you have people that don't have to have experience. They just have to have, you know, sound mind and body, and we'll be happy to bring them onto the team and use their talents and services in the betterment of our community. So appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. We are on to, Counsel Hede, I think this is going to be you, 2020-68-1, Thame Street repairs on page 36.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving a one-time general contingency transfer in the amount of $69,969.50 to reimburse the City of Groton for the reconstruction of a portion of Thame Street damage during heavy rains and flash flooding in July 2019. I so move.
Second. Moved by Hede, seconded by Zeperek. Mr. Burke, did you want to address anything with this?
Sorry. I thought you said Reiner.
No. Did you want to address anything on this particular? We discussed this in...
We discussed it briefly at the joint meeting, and there's also a pretty thorough attachment that explains it all.
Very good. Counsel Gortlon?
I have one question, as I'm newly at this phase from the RTM. When we approve certain funds to the city, so like per the obligation, per the charter, which I feel, you know, we should support, if there's a positive revenue out of that, so say something positive, X, and they only use Y, and, you know, a positive revenue's back, what happens with the remaining funds?
As, sorry, at the joint meeting, as Mayor Hedrick had mentioned, that money that remains in the fund, they'll apply it to the next year's request to the town, so they'll deduct that. So basically, it'll come back to us in a way. So let's say they had $10,000 left from this year's fund or budget, and they were going to ask for $200,000 next year. Well, they'd ask for $190,000 instead because they would utilize what's in that fund.
So then the money goes into their general fund until they need it again, is what you're saying?
I assume it goes into a special fund rather than the general fund.
A special fund.
Right.
Versus it coming back to the town? So they hold it until the next year if needed?
Right. Because by the time that year's wrapping up, you're going right into that budget, next budget year, so there's really not, it wouldn't make sense, as long as it's coming, being used offset the request. It really wouldn't make sense to come back to the town, only if it was going to be held there long-term.
And is that per the charter, or is that just something we do?
That's just something we do. Again, with the timing, it really wouldn't make sense to come back to the town unless it was going to be held longer.
And so do we, I guess I'm just, it was brought to my attention, I was just curious. So then how do we, so then we get a report stating how much was left over and how much they're holding?
Yes.
Okay, I guess. I don't know.
And I'm sure Mayor Hedrick could explain further when the three and three committee meet. I know he's not on the committee, but he told me he was going to...
No, I'm not saying the funds are being wrongly used or it shouldn't.
No, I totally understand what you mean, yeah.
I guess newly being involved in this, I'm just looking at, we approve something, and if it was $50,000 they wanted, but they only spent $20,000, do we get it back? Does it come back into our fund? How is that money moved? Where is it sitting? What type of fund is it sitting in? And is that per the charter, or what's the rule on that? Should it just come back? That was my question. So I'd love to, if you could get back to me on that, it would be helpful. I'd love to hear more about like how that actually...
Again, it sits in a special fund. It's not per charter or anything else. It's just from practice. Matter of fact, I think prior to Mayor Hedrick, I'm not even sure it came back to us in any way or offset anything. And again, with the way the budgets work, if you're, God, you're operating years back to back, it wouldn't make sense to come back to the town. Are you on the three and three committee? I forget.
I'm not.
Okay. And I suggest three and three committee, you know, if they have any. That's our full knowledge. I've talked to Cindy recently about it, so anything else, you know, you could reach out to Mayor Hedrick.
Can you explain to me what the three and three committee is, because I'm not really aware of that, as I apologize.
That comes out of the arbitration on earlier highway funding issues. Essentially, it was said that three members of the city council, three members of the town council would meet and hash over the budget.
So where's it, you're waiting?
Joe Portia and myself.
Yeah. It hasn't formed yet, so if that's why, it's not sinking. But thank you for...
You haven't convened yet.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that and making me understand how those monies are moved. Thank you.
Okay. So any further questions on this? I have one question on this particular item, and that is, what was the, what will the amount in contingency be after this transfer?
I don't have that. Well, if you don't give me a minute, maybe I'll find something on my phone.
I just, I was curious. If you could let us know, that would be great. Thank you. Any other item, any other questions on this item?
I think we went over all of it pretty well.
I agree. I agree. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven counselors. Very good. Okay. We are on to item 5E. I just have to make sure I have the correct. Strike, yeah. Okay, so then I am on the right one. All right, very good. So do you want to read, Counsel Obray? Would you like to read that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Motion for executive session. I hereby move that the members of the Town Council, Committee of the Whole, Town Manager John Burrit, Assistant Town Manager Bob Zagany, Planning Director John Reiner, Assistant Planning Director Deb Jones, Economic Development Manager Paige Brock, Rob Monsetti, Mike Goman, Attorney, oh, I'm killing these names.
DeJoy.
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 DeJoy, Mario DeJoy, Michael DeJoy, and Joseph DeJoy go into executive session pursuant to General Statute Section 1-206D for the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning purchases and development of the former Sealy School property. I so move.
Second.
And apologize for the name butchering.
Moved by Obray and seconded by Baumgartner. Before we go into executive session, Mr. Reiner wishes to speak.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So I do want to give just a brief overview of the process we've taken to this point on the Sealy School, and just for the benefit of the public and transparency, so people know where we are, where we're going, and then, once we kind of give that overview, we can then go into executive session. So kind of stepping back a little bit on the history of this project, many years ago, for many years, the town has been trying to sell the Sealy School, looking at development options there. We issued an RFP about a year and a half ago, had a committee put together, made up of staff, council members, and did a first round of interviews, did another round of interviews, selected a preferred developer, brought that preferred developer before the council, and that deal ended up falling through. We went then back to our short list of applicants that had submitted proposals, had them refine their proposals a little bit more based on some feedback, did another couple rounds of interviews, and then began working with one firm that we're going to be bringing to you shortly in executive session. I also want to mention that next week, next Wednesday night, in this room at 6:30, we will be having a public presentation, kind of an unveiling of the concept plan for this particular property. What we always look to do with all of these properties is first to find a partner. I think I've used the analogy before, the Dan's Partner. We look for a quality, competent development firm that can build the product that we're looking for on these sites, and that's what we believe we've selected. When the council is moving forward with these projects and looking to sign option agreements or purchase and sales agreements, you are not approving any planning and zoning processes or any guarantees of approval. It's more, this is a preferred developer that we're looking to select on behalf of the town, and then they have to go do their due diligence, their public outreach, and then start going through the actual planning and zoning process. So up until this point, plans that we see are very much conceptual, and next Wednesday night, this room, 6:30 PM, we, staff, and the developed, hopefully, preferred developer will be making a public presentation to the community of all of Groton. They'll be sending out some notices in the mail tomorrow, and we'll be putting things out on social media and some other avenues.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously.
Before we cut off, I've got that amount if you want for contingency, about $271,000 remaining.
Thank you very much. So we are in executive session at 9:11. Thank you.